Really complex molecules, the stuff you need to create life. And the GBT happens to be the best telescope in the world to go look for these things. So math is kind of the underpinning, you can think of it, for all of the science that we do. It's cool to get data from the telescope, but the really cool part is to try to say, what does this data mean? And the only way to understand that is to really look at the physics or the chemistry behind what you saw. And to understand the physics and chemistry, you really have to understand the math that's it's behind it. I love working at a telescope. It's just, it's fun to be part of the discoveries. It's fun to get to see what's going on and hear what's going on from the different scientists. It's fun to have the scientists here because you get to hear their excitement about what they're doing. And it's just an incredible amount of fun to just see the really good science coming out of the telescope here. And also getting to know you helped out with it. And that's a nice, nice feeling.
It is time for us to get back in that elevator and head down to the bottom.
Not soon enough for me.
We're going to meet up with one of the STEM educators here at the Green Bank Observatory.
I'm Sophie St. George. I work here at the Green Bank Observatory as a education specialist. And part of my job is working with student groups during our summer camps as well as statewide outreach. I'm going to demonstrate the importance of radio frequency interference and protecting our telescopes from that interference that we cause every day in our own lives with cell phones and key fobs. The first of which includes this Faraday cage, which is a pretty rudimentary version of a Faraday cage. And its purpose is to protect the antenna that's inside. So how a Faraday cage works is this copper mesh is reflective to radio waves, and their waves cannot get through this mesh, so they bounce off and are reflected. And right now, we can see with the door ajar, already showing in our spectrum analyzer, kind of low down here. As we open the door, you'll see that signal getting brighter. This antenna is able to pick up radio waves, and so it's able to see parts of the electromagnetic spectrum that we cannot. With that door shut, we see the signal may still be a little bit of a bump, but ultimately it goes away. We use this kind of technology, Faraday cages on site, to protect our, our radio telescopes from radio frequency interference. We used to sell these fans in the gift shop, but we don't anymore. So lots of different point sources or interferences at specific frequencies. We can see these as sharp lines raising up from that baseline. As we move the fan outside the box, further away from the antenna and also protected by this copper mesh, we see those peaks still, but they're significantly reduced. Another thing that we have to manage at the observatory are, are receivers. They are electronic devices, which we've just seen produce radio frequency interference. And so we have to cool these down cryogenically, and we use compressed helium to do so. And I'm going to demonstrate a little bit of how that works to make a less noisy system. I don't have compressed helium with me, but I do have liquid nitrogen, which is very cold at negative 321 degrees Fahrenheit. We're going to start here by taking a very energetic system, like this balloon that I've blown up. I've put molecules in there, and they're in their gas state. So they're bouncing off the walls, they're making this balloon look expanded, look blown up. And we're going to see what happens when we cool those molecules down. So you can see that liquid nitrogen pouring out. And when we take, again, this energetic system in the balloon and pop it in there, think about what you might see happening. And just looking in, we see this latex becoming more plastic in appearance, we hear it crinkling. We also see our balloon constricting. And when we pull it out, we'll see just exactly what's happened. Those molecules that were gas are now liquid. You can see that sort of cloudy white. We'll just let that sort of expand again. It's not re-inflating. But those molecules that went from very energetic, very noisy in that gas phase, which they're returning to, were much more quiet, less energetic. And so we use this concept to cool these receivers down that have electronic components and create less noisy systems so that we don't see a whole lot of fuzzy interference from our own technology, and we can really capture the signal that's coming from space. Pretty cool. We are out of time here at the Green Bank Observatory. We'd like to thank everybody who shared their jobs with us.
And we want to remind everyone that the jobs you saw today are not the only professions here at the Green Bank Observatory. You also have bus drivers, cooks, grounds crew, machinists, and many others. Each of them plays an important role.
We hope to inspire you to learn even more.
We want you to continue to push yourselves safely outside your comfort zone. Who knows? You might discover a future career.
And if you liked this episode, be sure to follow STEM in 30 on Facebook and Twitter and subscribe to the National Air and Space Museum's YouTube channel.
Thanks for watching. I still can't believe we were on the top of air.
Why not?
Because it was scary. Literally scariest thing I've ever done. We are at the Green Bank Observatory in West Virginia. That's the whole thing. Thanks for coming.
Hi, I'm Beth.
I wasn't ready.
Okay. Are you ready now?
I'm ready now. Mike's going to put a over that.
Hi.
I wasn't ready. I was looking down!
You said okay, and I think you're ready to go.
I can actually see Mike through it.
Look at the tree swing.
I don't, I don't want to look at the trees.
Marty, look how small the truck is from up here. Marty, I'm not kidding when I say this, don't look straight down, just don't do it.
Anytime, are you guys ready? Still a few minutes?
All right, we're ready whenever. 30 seconds. Oh, thanks, okay.
And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, and welcome to the March 4th, 2024 meeting of the Select Board. And we have the School Board with us today. I'm Select Board Chair Tom Locusa, and I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Josh Levine. Veneet Amavati.
Here.
Mark Old.
Here.
Dan Zwirko.
Here.
Okay, and staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mark Barbieri.
Here.
And Veneet Amavati. My whole life, no one has ever pronounced Locusa correctly, and I, and I can't believe I'm having a chart. It's just not fair for me to do it to anybody. Okay, so this open meeting of the Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or QA function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. This, the meeting will feature resident comments. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand. When we get to the comments section of the meeting, I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for a comment. Please note the meeting is being recorded, and some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. I mean, recorded? Okay, other than us. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we ordinarily start with announcements, and this should go quick. Presidential primary in Long Meadow will be held, well, across the country, but across the state, March 5th, and it'll be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Community House at 7:35 Long Meadow Street. So that's tomorrow. Any additional information you need would be at www-longmeadowma.gov/elections. The 2024 Rain Barrel program is, is going to be getting, is beginning, it's a partnership between Public Works and the American Rain Barrel to host this program. Barrels are available for purchase by residents at a discounted price. The deadline for the order is May 5th, 2024. And for additional information about the program, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. The annual town report photo contest. We've done this for the past few years, we've announced this. The town is seeking your assistance in creating a cover for the 2023 annual town report. Please submit your original photo or drawing by March 22nd, 2024 at noon. Submissions should be a highlight, should highlight a historical or significant aspect of the town. This may be a building, event, location, et cetera, et cetera. Creativity is encouraged, but the work must be original. For guidelines and information on how to submit your photo, please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And Citizen of the Year Award. The nomination forms are available for this award. Nominations are due no later than Friday, March 29th, 2024. Citizens are encouraged to submit award nomination for a citizen or a community organization or a group who deserve recognition. There's two categories. And they, you know, these are folks who perform to service or act beyond what is normally expected in the service of the town or the community. Nominees must be resident of Long Meadow, and and we have a limit for town employees or elect, currently affected elected officials. For additional information, please fill out the form, and please visit www-longmeadowma.gov/civicalerts. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a resident comment tonight? We do have one. Okay, if you could have a seat over here by this microphone and start with your name and address and
Good evening. My name is Diane Fortilio. I live at 80 Cheshire Drive in Long Meadow. Good evening, Select Board members. I appreciate the time to speak at the meeting. I am the co-president of CEAL, which is the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow. I am here this evening to speak to you about the proposed budget being submitted to you by the School Committee. I understand that our schools did not receive as much funding from Chapter 70 as expected. Unfortunately, I know the school had to make cuts and did not approve certain things that are drastically needed for our special education students due to lack of funding. In the town of Long Meadow, there are 2,132 students, and out of that number, there are 562 students who are on a special education plan, IEP. Currently, we only have two special education supervisors that monitor all three elementary schools and help with the middle school. This is a teaching position, not an administrative position. We desperately need another special education supervisor to help with the elementary and middle schools as the current level of support is inadequate. The class size has increased significantly every year, and we don't see that decreasing in the foreseeable future. Having an additional special education supervisor will allow for more individualized attention and support for these students, helping them reach their full potential. The proposed budget for the upcoming school year does not allocate enough funding for a much-needed special education supervisor for the elementary and middle school levels. I ask that you approve more funding for this position to be added to the school budget for the proposed 2024-2025 school year. Special education students, parents, and caregivers need your help in having this position added to the school budget. As the co-president of CEAL, I am deeply concerned about the lack of funding for special education programs in our school. It is essential that we provide the necessary support and resources for our special education students to ensure they receive the quality of education they deserve. Special education students face unique challenges and require specialized support to succeed in school. By investing in a dedicated special education supervisor, we can assure that these students receive the special support they need to thrive academically and socially. The position is not a luxury, but a necessary for the well-being for our special education students, parents, caregivers, and teachers. I urge the Select Board members to consider approving additional funding for the special education supervisor position in the school budget for the upcoming school year. By prioritizing the needs of our special education students, we can create a more inclusive and supportive learning environment for all of the students in Long Meadow. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to working together to ensure that all students in our district have the resources and support they need to succeed. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for three minutes, right on the money. Any other residents or anyone online?
Just a reminder, if you're on the Zoom, press the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a comment. I don't see anyone right now. You should be outside.
Okay, we're set. Okay, then we will move on to presentation of our guests. We have the, this 2025 School Department Budget Presentation from Superintendent O'Shea of the School Department, and it was approved by the School Committee at their previous meeting. And so we'll start with that.
Could I first?
Pardon? Well, we have this joint meeting with the School Board on their budget, and that's the main thing people are plugging into because the town, 70% of the budget is to the School Department. And so we have an agenda that, you know, we published, and so I don't know, I mean
I'll act your mercy.
Unless there's a motion from the Board that we suspend the School Department meeting for, okay. I don't, I hope this won't take too long. The church, so I'll make a motion that we hear. Sorry to keep everyone waiting. To change the agenda? Object, or I'm sorry, 10A. I bet we hear 10A out of order.
Second, second.
Okay. Any, any for the discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Approved. So why don't you approach the, take this mic here so we don't have to have anyone move. And so this is a request that we received. It's a tree belt request, and so it comes before the Board because there's a request to place some permanent objects in the tree belt in front of the First Church of Long Meadow. So go ahead.
I believe that all of you got the letter two weeks ago about our desire to complete our Witness Stone projects by placing two little square recognitions of two enslaved people along the sidewalk between First Church and Center School. Yeah, I think you all got a picture of exactly what that looks like.
Yeah.
You want to give me all the, want me to give you all the details?
I don't know if anyone needs additional details.
I mean, this seems like it's a pretty, pretty easy vote for all of us to make, or it should be.
I guess I would disagree. I don't think it is an easy vote for me at this time. I think I've tried to make it clear that I believe that this sort of a project needs to go through our DEI committee to make sure it meets the needs of the local African-American community, that there was no one who would be insulted by a small sort of square, you know? And I know, I've been to a lot of cemeteries, and anytime I've ever seen a stone that size, it's for an infant. And we're talking about two individuals who worked their whole life for free as African-American slaves, and I want to make sure that, that this has been run by somebody. I don't want to just hear it from the church and the school. That's my feeling, yeah.
I, I think that that's reasonable to get another, some more input on this.
Yeah.
I don't know if DEI speaks for any community as a whole. I don't know if anybody can speak for any community and say 100% of everyone, people are going to agree with this. But if we want to refer this to DEI and have them bring their opinion to us, I'm fine with that. I'm also, I think that this is an important thing to do to contextualize some, a piece of history, a really unfortunate piece of history in Long Meadow that a lot of people don't know about, and I think it would be, I think this is a very good thing to do because people can't miss it. If there's something else we want to do on top of that, that's, I'm open to that too. But I, I think that this is the minimum we should do, and I think it's a really great, great start.
So I guess I'd say that the DEI committee would have to search out if there's any local African-American historical committee group, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think this is the right thing to do, and frankly, I think one of the reasons this is coming before the Select Board is because of the size of the right-of-way or, or tree belt on Long Meadow Street. If this was on any other street, it's quote-unquote "on the church's property," and they, they could do what they wanted. And so, you know, just like Bay Path came to us looking for the walls on Bay Path because of the size of the, the tree belt, I think that this is a, I won't say it's a formality, but it's more of a, of a, you know, can, can we do what we really like to do on the town's lawn? I think their property, for, for me, the only issue, and I go, again, I'll go back to the, the Bay Path precedent we set, was they do this at their own liability. In other words, if, you know, a sewer line needs to go through there, we're going to dig these up and hand them to them and not going to worry about managing the, the system. For me, that's more important than from, from where the, the town is, the liability, than is this the right thing to do? It's clearly be the right thing to do, and so I would support it right away.
And I would also say, like, Tom, some of your concerns, they, they actually had an event that I attended last week. I was the only member of the Board that was there, and they brought, you know, there were questions being asked, and so I think that would have probably been an appropriate time to, to attend that event if there were concerns and, or reach out to other members of the community to, to answer some of your questions. But to me, this is a, an absolute no-brainer that we should be supporting as a, as a board, and I think that that's
I'd say I support the idea. I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I just want to make sure it's been properly run by the African-American community in Western Mass. That's all I'm saying. And that night I was sick, so I couldn't go. It was last week, Tuesday or something. I don't know, Veneet, I don't know if you had
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that this is a project that is legitimate and has been vetted already. And so I, I don't know if going to our DEI committee and getting their blessing is something that would make, you know, that much of a difference when you're talking about some other, you know, bigger organization or group to give, you know, their blessing to it. And I don't know exactly who that would be. I don't know if you might have a response to this or, you know, kind of go through what you guys have, you know, already thought about.
Well, we are working, we're not doing this as a, as a First Church project. This is all being done in cooperation with the Witness Stone Project. These are folks who have done this kind of thing in Connecticut, vastly in Connecticut. There are many of them in Deerfield. And, and the reason we were excited about it was that it, it wasn't a First Church project, that the schools are involved with this and the whole community are involved with it. We have scheduled on April 24th Patricia Wilson Phineas, who now, because of the Witness Stone Project, has found a ancestry. Her ancestors were enslaved, and because of the project and the research that was done on her family, she now has ancestry. And she is going to be a speaker both for the seventh graders as well as First Church on April 24th at 7 o'clock. Here's a, a black lady who has benefited from all the work that the Witness Stone Project has done.
Yeah, I just don't know if one person would be enough to stand up against a whole group of people if, if she wasn't happy with it. And I think we, we have a DEI community, committee to help us make, you know, issues that are going to affect different cultures. And so that's why I think they should give it a stamp of approval and inform the Board because, you know, we, I, I don't think we set that committee up just so we could say, oh, we have one of those committees. I think we should set it up and, and use it for anything that, as a cultural issue that comes before the Board, so, yeah.
I, I think the DI committee, like I said, they may have more ideas. I just cannot imagine them not being in favor of this. And if they also, they are to help us reach out, but they're not, I, I don't think the DI, the purpose of the DI committee is to speak for anyone. And it's to help give voice to people, but I don't think that the DI can speak for any group of people. I don't think anybody can speak for any group of people unless you're elected, and then you have to. So I, with that, I, I move to approve the placement of the two Witness Stones on town property in front of the First Church of Christ with the provision that the town has no liability and the stones can be removed if necessary.
Second.
Okay.
And also, it will be required that they receive a certificate of appropriateness from the historic district as well.
And with that, a further provision. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so a certificate of appropriateness from the
Historic District.
Historical, because it's in the historic district. Okay, and we, the second, any
Oh, and I think I just also want to point out that this is a program that's also been funded by Massachusetts Humanities and also the Massachusetts Cultural Council as well, so.
Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you for coming. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
So on to the presentation of the School Department and their budget.
We may, we may need to have the School Committee and the Finance Committee call a meeting in the session if there is here, if they've got quorums.
If they need to.
Okay.
We have a forum, we have, I think, a forum people online.
What's the folks online?
Do you want to just call, or do you feel you need to call your committee?
I don't think we need a real call, but yeah, we have a quorum for the Finance Committee.
Make sure we cover the opening.
We need to open?
Yeah.
So, okay, give me the words.
Did you just, just say
Okay. We're opening the meeting for the Finance Committee to review the School Board budget.
I'll actually just triple-check. Do we have anybody from our committee online? Because we do have three of us in the room, so if there's one online, we would need to.
Okay, I'm, for some reason, it keeps on disconnecting me from the display, so just bear with me one sec. I see I don't think, I see a Mary on there, but I don't know if there's
No, Mary's here.
Mary's here, so then I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's everyone right there.
Here are students is here online from the Finance Committee.
All right, okay.
Kansas, the Welch.
All right, so the Finance Committee is, you're having an open meeting?
Yeah.
And the School Department, is there anybody there?
Nope.
To get a quorum? Okay. Well, I know you're still prepared.
All right. Well, just kick off by saying, I, I think everybody here knows this has been a, an extra-challenging budget year. We appreciate your patience with waiting for us a couple of extra weeks so that we could have some time to continue to figure out some of the finer points of our budget and see if we could lock down some more particulars related to numbers. We've had some increases related to contractual obligations, utilities, the usual things that every district has, and, you know, trying to make sure that we're keeping a level service for our students as much as possible. And so we come to you tonight with an approved budget that meets the 3% number that we know is most reflective of the town's current position and where you all are. is most reflective of the town's current position and where you all are with the whole town budget. And we appreciate the time that everybody has put into being available to this, but also the time on behalf of the school department for Mr. Mazza and others who put a lot of hours into crafting a budget that we could bring to you tonight. Thank you. And I know that Dr. Shea has a presentation with a little bit more specific detail related to some numbers that we were asked to get together.
Okay. Thanks for your hard work.
Appreciate the opportunity to present the school committee's FY '25 voted budget to you tonight and take the opportunity to thank town manager, finance director for being always available and supportive and providing timely information to us in the process of developing a recommendation for the school committee. Mr. Mazza, back there in the comfortable seats, is, is joined with two school committee members, Mary Keane and Jamie Hench. So appreciated the involvement, the high level of involvement of the school committee in the development of this budget. So we can, Mike can advance it. The next slide is a familiar one to you. It's simply our budget calendar. I won't linger on this, but I think this, this select board understands that, you know, while we have a voted budget for you tonight, we, there's still plenty of steps in front of us, plenty of milestones in front of us. Next slide, please. These are the, the goals that have driven the development of this budget. Most specifically, we're focused on our longstanding commitment to educational excellence, our commitment also to multi-tiered systems of support, which is reflected in our district improvement plan. We always want to bring a budget to the community that is cost-effective and sustainable and also places some privacy on optimal class size and our ongoing commitment, our contractual obligations to our employees. Next slide, Mike. For you tonight, I wanted to provide some broader fiscal context and some of the trends that I know the select board is familiar with, but probably worth the opportunity to have a conversation with the whole community on and including our finance committee. So, next slide, Mike. This is a slide that I have described as sort of the, the cost of doing business. The foundation budget is the minimum amount that is set by the state to educate students in a given community. So minimally, the state would require a budget of $34.2 million to, for the students of Long Meadow. Obviously, this community goes well beyond that, so we're fortunate to educate in a community where the community, the select board, the school committee have always gone above that minimum foundation budget requirement. But I present this slide because I, I think you'll see the escalating costs associated with that foundation budget. So by the, by the state's calculation, the minimum amount that would be required to educate students in Long Meadow has increased dramatically in the, in recent years. And so I think that's a reflection of the realities of educating students nowadays. I think it's a reality of some of the inflationary pressures that the select board is, is certainly familiar with. And it's a reality, it's a reflection of the, of the growing and more complex needs that students come to us with every single day. And so as that, that minimum amount has escalated, next slide, Mike. The, the good news is that Chapter 78, which is the primary source of state aid that communities receive to support the education of students, that has increased as well. And so in recent years, Chapter 78 to Long Meadow and other communities has increased in response to the Student Opportunity Act, which fundamentally revised the funding formula for education in the state of Massachusetts. But you'll notice the last two bars on this graph show us that while in FY '24, the '23-'24 school year, we received $7,99,369, we are anticipating based on the governor's budget, a very, very modest increase that would get us to $7.1 million in Chapter 78. That's a, that's the, as you can see, the most modest minimal increase that we have seen in recent years. And so, next slide, Mike. And this slide tells a similar story, but again, worth noting, because I, I think it helps situate our budget in the, in the broader fiscal context of this community and in the state of Massachusetts. You'll see that if net school spending reflects the expenditure, all funds in a given fiscal year. And so you'll see that we have become more reliant, modestly more reliant on Chapter 78 in recent years. So whereas in FY '18, Long Meadow, Chapter 78 made up less than 12% of our net school spending. In FY '24, this is based on a budgeted figure, in FY '24, it was well over, it was about 14.5%. And so as a community, we've become more reliant on Chapter 70. And so the next slide, again, it sort of reflects the same situation. You'll see that, again, we're really grateful that Long Meadow spends well beyond what is minimally required. In FY '18, Long Meadow spent 150% of what was, 50% above what was minimally required. You'll see that it's, it's declined somewhat in recent years so that in FY '24, based on our voted budget, it was about 44%. 44% above what would be minimally required to be spent by a community. Some communities spend at the bare minimum. Some communities spend well above 40 or 50% of what is minimally required. But Long Meadow makes a strong effort to spend over what is minimally required, but you can see that it, it has fallen off in recent years, partly because Chapter 78 has, has offset that as well. So, next slide, Mike. And again, just sort of a broad fiscal graph here for you. You'll see that the state has stepped up its efforts with Chapter 70 increases in recent years, but you'll notice the drop-off that all communities across the state in the aggregate can expect in FY '25. So Long Meadow is one of, of over 200 communities that will, is projected to receive the minimum increase in Chapter 78. That, that, that is $30 per student. As you can imagine, $30 per student increase in Chapter 78 from the state doesn't go a long way to offset escalating costs. And so that is something that, let's see if Mike can reconnect for you here.
It's being, it's being mean right now.
All right. There we go. So that, that, that minimum increase, and this slide, you can keep it on there. In FY '23, we received, the, the town of Long Meadow received over a $700,000 increase in Chapter 78. In FY '24, it was over $600,000 in Chapter 78. This year, based on the governor's budget that was released in January, we are looking at only an $81,000 increase in Chapter 78. And, you know, I think you could additionally make the case that the increases we've seen in recent years have really been gobbled up by a lot of inflationary pressures. So this is what, you know, to go back to our chair's comments to, to kick us off, this is what, really one of the things that's made this a very challenging budget for us and, and also for, for the town. Let me stop there. Actually, we'll go one more slide if we could and then we'll stop and, and before we get into the details of our budget. This is the most recent data available. This is from FY '22. This is per pupil expenditures, all funds. And I've selected a, a cross-section of communities. Most of these are local communities. The communities that are not local to us are identified by DESI as being sort of demographically similar to Long Meadow. Marshfield, Redding, Situate, I think I have one more up there. Wellesley is not demographically similar to it. I think I put that up there just for, you know, really broad context to see that Wellesley spends over $25,000 per student. Long Meadow, we spend in the neighborhood of $16,000, I think it was. And so I, I guess I present this to you to show you that on a per pupil expenditure basis, I think we have a sustainable, manageable, almost typical budget for a community like Long Meadow. But I know that in, in past years, select board members have kind of wanted and benefited from this broader context really to understand, you know, the revenue that we receive from the state in relation to education and how, what our per pupil expenditures are in relation to neighboring communities and perhaps demographically similar communities. You'll see that Springfield and Holyoke, I included them on the, on the, on the chart here, they're, they spend well over $20,000 per student. Their realities are very, very different than ours, of course, and so it's not an apples-to-apples comparison there. But that's per pupil expenditures, all funds, all-in, local revenue, state revenue, federal revenue. So I'll stop there before we get to the details of our budget, unless you want me to keep going.
Any questions?
I can receive. All right. Thanks, Mike. We'll go next. So at the highest level, a summary, again, I know the, the select board is familiar with this budget summary. The voted budget before you requests a general fund amount of $40,63,648. That's $1.1 million over FY '24. You'll see that in terms of special revenue, this, special revenue relates to the federal entitlement grants or other competitive grants that we receive directly. That special revenue, we're projecting to increase by $23,758 over FY '24. The net effect of that is that our total budget for FY '25, based on the vote of the school committee, would be $43,299,679, which is a $1.19 million increase over FY '24. To see how that stacks up, to, you'll see that, that this, these figures are in your meeting packet, but this reflects a 3% increase from the general fund over FY '24. That 3% increase is, I would say, on the more ambitious side of the request that the school committee has made in recent years. Last year, we had a 4%. We can advance a slide or two. There you go. In FY '24, we, we required a 4% increase from the general fund. In FY '25, we're looking at, based on the, sort of the town parameters, a 3% increase. The, the net increase to our budget, all funds, is a 2.84% increase to the total budget overall. But you'll see how that, how those adjustments stack up to recent fiscal years. Obviously, the schools, like the town, dealing with, you know, some inflationary pressures and the requirements to meet the contractual obligations of employees. And, next slide. Small font, my apologies here, but again, this is in your meeting packet. It's small because there's a lot here. This is, this is a, a listing of some of the, the non-entitlement grants that support our work here in Long Meadow Public Schools. I present this only because I would want the select board and the wider community to know that we aggressively pursue grants that are in line with our, our strategic goals. And I think we've been very successful with that and grateful to town officials and town employees who are often very, very much involved in our pursuit of these grants. You'll note that the last one on, on the list here is the $12,279 grant from Mass Humanities. That's a reflection of the, the Witness Stones Project that you discussed to, to kick off your meeting. So at every opportunity, we, we pursue grants that are in line with our, our goals. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on any of the grants that are projected there. And next slide. And one more, thanks, Mike. So if you're able to capture this one, give back up one. So the, this is a, perhaps a familiar format in the way we present our budget to the, to the community. It's a reflection of the additions and increases along with some potential reductions. And so at the top right, you'll see, you know, the, the most pressing obligation is our contractual obligations. And simply to meet our contractual obligations to our employees, we would, that would require a $1.2 million investment. We have $132,000 set aside as an increase for computer software and services for school and town. Utilities, Mr. Mazza and Ian and Lynn are probably in a better position to talk about projected utility costs, but as we look to lock into utility contracts at some point in the future, perhaps that number will become firmer, but just as everybody who runs a household knows, the cost of eating your home and providing electricity to your home is, is increasing and we're experiencing the same thing. We have other increases associated with transportation services. Largely, that relates to the transportation of students in district. And on the left-hand side, you'll see some of the reductions that are associated with this budget. We are looking at two elementary teachers at the, that relate to enrollment. We're seeing, will, will require fewer sections at the elementary level next year than we will this year. And so those two positions at the elementary level can be linked to enrollment declines. Similarly, some, two special education teachers relate to some students who are transitioning from one grade span to another. On a district, tuitions are projected to decrease. One of the line items there that is concerning to all of us, particularly the school committee, is the student support teachers. We are expecting a reduction in Title I aid. Title I aid is, comes directly to us from the federal government and it, it supports schools and communities that have high rates of families meeting the federal poverty level. And so Title I is, we're looking at about a 38% reduction in Title I funds for next year. These student support centers have been really critical for us in terms of supporting students with social, emotional challenges and behavioral challenges. You'll also see that this position, this budget would reduce music staffing at the elementary and middle levels. This is a band instructor position. There's been certainly a lot of conversation relating to this position, but what I would want to assure the select board and, and others watching is that if this position were to come off, our elementary and middle band staffing will be where it has been for the last about dozen years, with this year, with this year being the exception. We were able to introduce this band instructor position in, in the '23-'24 school year. I think it was a wise investment just to kind of keep pushing us over the COVID hump that really affected music education, but we're simply not in a position to retain that band instruction, that band instructor position in FY '25. But again, staffing levels associated with music education will be where they have been for the past dozen or so years, with the exception of the '23-'24 school year. for the past dozen or so years, with the exception of the '23-'24 school year. You'll see a half a position. There's two Long Meadow High positions, 2.5 positions. They're listed separately because they came in two different iterations of our presentation, but we're looking at a single position being eliminated at Long Meadow High School. We're seeing a small drop off in enrollment at Long Meadow High. Frankly, it probably doesn't equate to a full position, but with the challenges that we're facing, we'll have to make that work. You'll also see that we are projecting very limited attrition. Attrition is a number that we relate to retirements, and when we have retirees, we're typically able to bring in new educators lower on the salary schedule, so there's some natural savings associated with attrition. We have very, very few retirees committed for the FY '25 school year. So typically, attrition savings are much greater than what we're projecting for FY '25. Few other adjustments that if you have any questions on those, I don't want to go through every single detail there, but if you have any questions on any of those items, happy to happy to address those. And if we can hit the next slide, Mike. I think this select board and the finance committee are well aware that, you know, there's the budget continues to evolve and unfold, and we are we remain hopeful that the legislature will increase the Chapter 78 and perhaps bring us above that $30 minimum. Utilities are a moving target. We always have to keep our eye on enrollment and be responsive to any increases or frankly any decreases. The number of kindergarten sections is always a big variable in our budget. We are projecting 11 sections in kindergarten for the '24-'25 school year. This year, we have 10, but based on some census data we've seen, we think we need an additional kindergarten section next year. Transportation, Mr. Mazza and I have been talking recently about, you know, whether or not there's some efficiencies that we can identify in that area. Special education services, we always want to be responsive to the evolving, changing needs of students. Fee-based revenue is something that the committee will have to continue to discuss. And then school choice is a source of revenue as well that we have not yet decided on the number of school choice slots that will be open in FY '25. And the next slide, if we could. This is the slide, I think, that really tries to capture the very, very real budget challenges that we are facing in FY '25. This is the most challenging budget that I've had to put together during my time in Long Meadow, and there is a number of concerns that we have. We feel that there is unmet need, frankly, that there is there are places that we would that students need some additional investment for. What are those areas? Well, we'll continue to monitor class size. We'll need to understand how that that one position at Long Meadow High will affect class size there. We have some cohorts of students at going into third grade at Wolf Swamp that in another budget year, we might have added a section to support the students in that rising third grade at Wolf Swamp. With the with everything we're trying to balance this year, we're just not in a position to do that right now. Will we be able to? If some things break our way, perhaps, but right now, that's a section, that's a cohort that we're keeping our eyes on. I mentioned the reduction in Title I federal funds. That's that's concerning in terms of affecting the staffing of our student support centers. The thank you to our COO president, who spoke very eloquently earlier about the importance of a special education supervisor position. This budget foregoes a proposed addition. In the kind of early iteration of the FY '25 budget, we had contemplated adding that special education supervisor position, but as the budget unfolded and as the Chapter 70 number came back and as we understood the town's fiscal position, we feel like we're just not in a position to add that special education supervisor position. But as was noted earlier, it we would certainly benefit from it. Our students and families would benefit from it. This recommendation doesn't fund the elementary band position that we talked about. It doesn't address an increasing need for instructional coaching. Our educators, one of our principals said at a meeting last year, and I quote him often, that we expect more of educators than ever before, and we need to support our educators, and instructional coaching is a way to do that. Instructional coaches provide embedded professional development. They help organize the work and make sure that we're aligned across grades and schools. There is certainly plenty of places, I think, if our principals, you know, I like to echo the sentiments of our administrative team, and I think if they were here tonight, they would say that they're seeing growing needs from our students behaviorally and socially, and obviously, we're going to continue to commit to the academic excellence that that we are known for. So so there's some there's some unmet need here, and I remain concerned about while 3% is reflective of the town's fiscal position and while it is an increase that stacks up well to historic increases, I remain concerned that, you know, that there are some areas that still need attention. I'm hopeful that perhaps as the spring goes moves on, that some things will break in our favor and that we might be in a position to come back with an amended budget or move some things around inside the voted budget to address the needs that that are listed here. So thanks for your attention and apologies to the school committee who has heard this much of these sentiments six times now. So open to your thoughts, questions, feedback.
Well, my first reaction is to thank you, everyone who worked on this budget, and I could tell, I mean, Marty, you just get better at this every year, and I know Tom does a lot of work with you, but I could see how you really struggled and made some tough decisions, but things that were really fair to the town side of things, and I appreciate that. I guess my first question would be, with going through all this to bring the budget down to 3%, you know, is there anything that you felt really good about being able to keep in the budget? Is there something that you say, like, I was really glad this didn't get cut?
I think I think this there's a there's a few exceptions to what I'm about to say, but I think that this budget maintains our commitment to optimal class size. Again, the exceptions to that being the cohort of students going into third grade at Wolf Swamp, and then I also want to keep our eyes on the high school class size. But I know that's been something that, you know, there's a longstanding commitment to that in Long Meadow, and so I would say I would say class size. And, you know, frankly, just, you know, we also thought for a little while, we were worried that we might lose some library services, that we might need to even reduce nursing services. And we moved some things around and reconsidered the recommendation and were able to retain library staffing where it currently is, nursing staffing where it currently is. So really, this budget was more about, you know, preserving existing service levels. Like, that was the that was our priority, really.
Yeah, I know you talked about nursing services in past presentations and how, you know, the kids who come to school need nursing services more than they had 20 years ago, 30 years ago. I was just on the campus of Williams College, and, you know, for those of you who don't know, it's usually found to be the number one small college, which is a teaching school compared to a university. And I saw a student from Long Meadow there, and I've known at least three other students from Long Meadow who've gone to Williams. And it's it's nice to know that the number one small college in the country sort of keeps a slot open for someone from Long Meadow almost, I guess, every year, you know? And that's, you know, it's very impressive.
Yeah, for sure. Our students leave here well-prepared for for the next chapter, whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Any questions for everybody?
Yeah, Marty, what accounts for the reduction in the Title I funding? Is that just census data?
It's FY '22 census data. And, you know, a few of us have had an opportunity to explore it with liaisons at DESI. One explanation I heard, this is somewhat speculative, but one of the explanations I heard was that some of the COVID relief payments and credits that were issued in the '21-'22 year, somewhere in there, that those brought some folks above the above the poverty levels that would have otherwise been a credit to us for Title I funding. So that we just saw a fluctuation there. It doesn't that that decrease doesn't seem to match our experience. I mean, I think there's plenty of data that we have that we're seeing an increasing number of students that are coming to us with financial need.
Okay. And is there any kind of process or anything available to kind of rebut that or ask for like a reassessment or anything?
It's right now, they are projections. It's not it's not locked in. We won't receive the actual Title I funding levels until, I think it's sometime in perhaps the summer. So we're a ways away, but I do not have hope that that number will change in any dramatic way. I don't see it. I don't see that happening based on our conversations with some of the liaisons at the Department of Education.
Okay. So looking at this slide, ongoing considerations, if we were to add up dollar amount for everything, do you have a ballpark of how much that would, you know, amount to? I'm just kind of trying to get a sense of what the difference is between what you think, you know, ideally you would need and, you know, what you're, you know, projecting now with this budget?
I think I'd want to I'd want to do some homework on that and get back to it, but hundreds of thousands of dollars for sure.
And and I don't know, when you were going through this list, I don't know if you did you touch on elementary literacy adoption?
Thank you. I appreciate the chance to do that. I did not. And I was going to save it to the end, and thanks for the chance to revisit that. We are in the middle of reviewing our elementary literacy curriculum, and so we've got a team of educators who are working really, really hard on that under the direction of Beth Nelson, our curriculum director. We anticipate bringing a recommendation to the school committee in May. Because you're talking sixth grades and really two curriculums, reading and writing, it's a sizable investment. It's a one-time investment. This budget, thank you for the chance to underscore this, this budget does not account for that elementary literacy adoption. It could be somewhere in the neighborhood of $250,000 to perhaps $450,000. And so we've been talking with the town manager about what our options might be to fund that one-time investment. But we're really at a critical stage, and it, you know, we've had a curriculum that has served us well, but, you know, we want something that's really aligned with the most recent high-quality indicators. So we're hoping that we can devise a plan with the with the town manager to the finance director to fund that for adoption in the '24-'25 school year.
And just one, sorry, one last question. So, you know, in case things do break in our favor and some more funding becomes available, I know that what you might select on this list depends on how much more funding is available, but taking a look at this, do you have some kind of like priority list of like, this is something that we really love to, you know? I mean, obviously, we love to do everything.
I think that's that's really, you know, within the purview of the school committee. I think we would lay out what the options are and what the value of each of the, you know, potential investments would be, and we'd have some great conversations with the school committee about, you know, where we might want to invest.
Yeah, I would say class size and student supports are the top two things that we would be looking at and which positions would best support those two goals.
Okay. Thanks. Well, fine. Josh.
Just thank you for your hard work. I know you're in a tough position, absolutely. And thank you for coming in at three. We do appreciate that. I don't know who will have the answer to this question. The millionaire tax is pretty new, and I know that's supposed to at least go towards education. This is the second year. Do we is that included in the budget, the expected windfall to the state from there? Or could that be something that could affect us in our favor?
It has been it is allegedly reflected in Chapter 70 distribution for FY '25. I'm having a hard time understanding how it could be reflected in in the Chapter 70 distribution. I also understand that some of it might be earmarked by the governor for actually for curriculum adoption. So that's something that we're trying to understand, too, is whether or not that millionaire's tax could be could offset some of the costs of the literacy adoption that we talked about earlier. So I think that's a great question. I've struggled to understand that, too. I was sort of more hopeful for Chapter 78, given that the millionaire's tax that you're talking about, yeah.
And then I just wanted to speak generally. We heard from COO and Miss Porfilio, and I she gave a statistic that I think I had an inkling of, but I was kind of startled by it. One in five kids, it sounds like, has an IEP in town, and that's that's pretty incredible. And I was of the board, I am the person who had kids going through education during school during COVID, and I'm seeing the lasting effects of it, my kids, their friends, and I am very concerned with any cuts to special education at this point, especially for the young kids. And I know you have to make cuts somewhere. There's only so much money. But I am very concerned because looking at it, there's two teacher positions was cut, and then a supervisory was in the cards and then cut.
Yeah.
And that that really concerns me because we're going to see this going forward. These elementary school kids are going to be middle school kids, are going to be high school kids. We're going to if we don't get them now, they're going to be in real trouble. So if you could give us your thought process on that, if you think there's anything we can do on that at this point, because I really don't want to see the three positions cut.
Yeah, one qualifier would be the addition. There's another addition in there, and that's a teacher of the deaf. It's a it's a .8 position. Again, just I think one of the things with special education is the needs evolve and change from year to year, and sometimes what we identify as need right now might be different than what turns out to be the need in September. So we'll have to be responsive to that. The special education positions on the left side of the chart that you were looking at relate to there's one there's one vacant position that will go unfilled, and then there's another position that is not needed because there's a cohort of students that are making their way to another grade span. And so we feel like those two positions won't result in the loss of services. But certainly, if we were in a different fiscal position, I think we would be introducing that special education supervising position. That's not a that's not a cut to the budget. It's just we're just foregoing the proposed addition.
So and just why, I guess, why that sticks in my craw is that it wasn't important enough to want to add, but you decided not to, or you can't.
Yeah.
What what group of kids was this going to was this position going to service?
Elementary and middle. And and it was a position, the special education supervisor position is a position that really works shoulder to shoulder with teachers and with families to make sure that we are following process, that we are communicating clearly, that IEPs are being fulfilled. The world of special education, like the world in many other parts of what we do, has become more complex. Next year, the state of Massachusetts is introducing a new IEP form that will require some support, training, and adjustment by our educators, and we're going to have to bring families up to speed on that as well. So that was part of the part of the thinking there, but we felt like if we if we pursued that, if that were included in the budget, it would have resulted in the loss of services elsewhere. It would have meant, you know, to make some hard choices and perhaps the loss of some direct service positions, like the nursing position I mentioned earlier. So, you know, these are all balanced. So, you know, these are all balancing a lot of challenging, competing needs. And there's, I would agree with what you said, Josh, that, you know, that there's some troubling aspects. This is, I think any superintendent wants to stand before a select board or a school committee and say, you know, we've made some investments that will help us continue to grow and improve. Right now, we're, we're trying to preserve existing service levels with this budget.
You know the budget better than us. I, I just, if things do change, I, I just, I'd like to see that to, I know it is a priority, but to continue to be a really top priority.
Yeah.
Because I, I think it's so important.
We agree. And, and it was one of the, one of the critical, one of the very few, frankly, FTE additions on the right side of this, other than that, the teacher of the deaf, which is really required to serve a very specific group of students. So, we agreed that that was, you know, a critical investment that we were hoping to incorporate into this budget.
It would have pushed past the 3%. So, trying to stay within that, that frame and making sure that we're responsive to the needs of town meant finding a way to, to keep at more of a level service than what we've been able to.
Like for, you know, for a time, we thought maybe we'd be able to come in with a 3.4% increase over, on the general fund, but that just, I think that would have presented some real challenges to the town.
The last two years, we've just got such big Chapter 70 increases. You guys were here, here for one of both of them, but it kind of, this time of year, or early in the year, all of a sudden, oh, we could bring them.
My hope would be that if Chapter 70 comes in higher than anticipated, that it would be something that, you know, would give us, give the school committee some additional wiggle room and perhaps make some of the investments that we've been talking about. So.
Mark.
I want to add my voice to those people thanking the school department, the school committee for meeting the budget constraints that we're all working under, frankly, and holding to the 3% year-over-year increase in the general fund requested. I know it's not pleasant, but it's, we, we very, very much appreciate it. So does the town. I'm looking around the room, and it's unfortunate that, this is my 15th school budget presentation, which when Paul Pesterzak was in the room last year, I couldn't say I've been here longer than anybody else. But at this point, it's, I think this, the third superintendent, Dr. O'Shea, the 15th school committee, all that kind of stuff. But, but some of the numbers that I, that I find the most important, I, I still wish I could, I could look at, and they're, they're kind of the longitudinal numbers that, that I think would help me, maybe others also, better understand what's going on. One of the things that I see is, and it was in the presentation again tonight, is we compare the request for fiscal 2025 with the revised budget for fiscal 2024. And this year, actually, that revised 2024 budget is actually closer to what was proposed this year last, this time last year than it's ever been before, but it's still not the same. And so, it would really be helpful to me to see what we were proposing it last year this time and what was approved at town meeting versus what we're being asked to, the towns being asked to fund and approve at this year's town meeting. I think those year-over-year comparisons would, would, would be more helpful. And along with those, there are a couple of the specific items that I think would be helpful. And I just listed a few, and I'm glad to share with you, with you at some points. You know, the general fund request, it is year, year-over-year. I went back and, like I said, I have 15 of these PowerPoint presentations. I tried to pull them out, and frankly, when I looked at the 2016 presentation or 2018 presentation that was done in May of 2015, and then looked at that same number a year later, they weren't quite the same. And so, I don't know how to look at those and say, how did they change or where did they change? But I think both this originally proposed and modified would certainly be helpful. And I guess that, those numbers also apply to this total school department budget, which is the general fund and, as you've shown, and special revenue. I think those are, those are important. The other area that we always ask about is, is total enrollment. And I understand that it's a moving target. The total enrollment on September 1st is not the enrollment on January 1st or on May 15th. And I don't know what time or date you, you need to pick. But I think to pick something would, would be helpful, kind of a steady thing, because again, the numbers I compare year-over-year, the enrollment changes, and it's gotta be, because it's only a few people, so students, so it's gotta be the time of year it's chosen and that kind of stuff. And I think that, that's a little confusing. And I think the same number applies for the staffing level. You, you've been very, very good at talking about FTEs and how you do FTEs. And again, we know that that changes year-over-year, and certainly as things change during the year.
Yeah.
You have a real great opportunity because, you know, as we know, just like the library or the fire department, you know, your responsibility to the town is the bottom line and not, if you will, how the sausage is made in between. But, you know, so during the years, things change, you might want to be changing things. But I think it's helpful for people like me to say, what were we asking for FTEs last year this time versus what are we asking for this year, as opposed to at the end of the current school year, what are we, what are we moving to? Because it skews the data a little bit for somebody like, like me trying to compare year-over-year, year-over-year. And finally, I think the, all that wraps down into what's the cost per student, again, not knowing how many students there you have at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, in the end of the year, and what your true costs are, you know. But, but I think it would be very helpful to get, you know, pick a, a moment in time for this, for the school department, school committee to, to select what they want to do. And frankly, I'm not in a position to tell you what that time and, and date is, but I think we need to do that so that we give the residents in town a good longitudinal data of, that we can compare year-over-year for things like what our general fund costs are, our number of FTEs, our students, and that kind of stuff, because things change too much. And I know that's kind of asking a lot, and I know some of it, we try to do year, year, year-over-year, but I think the bottom line is the, the budget's not an easy thing to do. I applaud the budget even.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of things. The, the, the FTE information is something that we did share with the school committee, and I believe it is posted as part of our budget documents.
The original one.
The, the original.
Presentation.
Yeah. So, it'll, it'll show you the historical trends with FTEs and the, the FTE reductions that were.
But are those taken at the same ti, you know, same point in time, I guess, Tom? That, that, that's part of the issue, because we know, and, and this isn't a criticism, that your needs on, on May for next year are very different from your needs in January of, of that year. And you may add a teacher to lead a teach, like you say, you don't know how many kids are gonna show up in a particular classroom.
Right.
But to say that what we're doing year-over-year, maybe helps.
It would be ending FTEs marked that we would have presented, and then what's occurred in FY24, and then what's included in the proposed budget for FY25. But I have the data for every year, what happened during the fiscal year, and then what the budget proposed.
The, the enrollment number, you make a good point about a moment in time for enrollment. October 1 is the date that the state uses for, to determine funding levels. So, whatever your enrollment is on October 1 and what the composition of that enrollment is on October 1 is what drives the Chapter 70 number. And so, but when we, when we talk about it with the school committee, we talk about what we're, what we're anticipating for the coming year in terms of class size and section distribution.
And you in this past have shared, Dr. O'Shea, with us, the, the state enrollment numbers. They're all really weird and di, and different from what we talk about internally as a whole with numbers. So, and I don't know, I don't know why.
Yeah, there's, yeah, lots, lots of factors. It may, it may or may not reflect students who are placed on a district or, you know, and it's sometimes our overall enrollment may or may not reflect preschool enrollment. And so, there, there's a few different versions of it, for sure.
Anyway, I mean, because from, from my perspective, I think that from, whether it's the select board or the finance committee or the, or the general residents in the town, I think some of those, you know, leading indicators or key indicators are a lot more helpful than things like the, you know, you get down to the real details, which you need to, but I'm not sure that, that, that those folks really look at that that closely.
Under, under the business tab on our district website, you'll find some of the detail that you're, that you're talking about. So.
And by the way, can we get a copy of this updated?
Yeah.
Afford it.
Well, did you hit some talk yet?
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, and I noticed the vocational budget, you know, went down by 28,000. And so, that's, students who are interested in vocational education can just choose to go to another vocational school in the, in the area, like Smith Voc or something like that?
Our, our provider of vocational education is Career Tech, which is run by the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. And so, students who want that technical experience, that vocational experience, will go over to Brush Hill, to the LPVC facility for a, a technical experience. The number you saw there-
Yeah.
-reflects a student who needed a vocational experience that was not provided by LPVC, but that student happens to be graduating, so that's a cost that took off. So, that, that doesn't reflect a reduction in service in any way, that, that particular number.
For vocational services.
But you make a great point that, you know, there is a, across the state, probably across the country, there's definitely an increased interest in vocational education and technical education. We're seeing more students express an interest in attending the LPVC Career Tech program, which is, which is great.
Oh, yeah. Well, people with the skill can earn a good living. So, yes, Dan.
Thank you. So, a lot of what I was gonna ask has already been asked, but to, to Benet's point on the priorities. So, I think it would be really helpful to, to understand, should we get additional funds, what, you know, what we might be looking at, whether it's 300K, what does that mean for, for funding and what those priorities might be?
Good.
The other thing, the other question I had was with contractual obligations, so is that just for next year? Or do you foresee additional obligations that might be kind of hitting us pretty hard?
We're moving into the, most of our employees are under collective bargaining agreement, and we're heading into the third and final year of those collective bargaining agreements. And so, that number reflects just our FY25 obligations. And so, what the number will look like beyond that is subject to negotiation and, and contract settlement. But, yeah, I mean, that, that, that number alone, when you think about our general fund increase that we're requesting from the town is 1.1 million dollars and change. Our contractual obligations alone, just to, just to meet the, the contracts is 1.0, over 1.2 million. So, something's, something's gotta give there. I think, you know, frankly, I would just say the cost of doing business, the cost of running a school district has gone up and up and up. And that's reflected in that foundation budget slide that, that we looked at earlier.
Okay. Well, well, Marianne has sand up and then the finance committee. So, Marianne, if you want to, your question.
Okay, yeah. I had two probably more specific questions than have been generally asked so far. So, I noticed under the additions, there's 132,000 in computer software services for the town and school.
Yeah.
And I know we talked earlier this year about the fact that we're running all of our IT expenses through the school budget. And I think one of the issues finance committee had at that point is transparency. So, as you look at that 132,000, can you tell me how much of that is actually school-driven and how much of it is town-driven? And, and so to lay that against teachers is kind of a weird thing, if it's technology support for the town. And, and so, I'm not saying we don't need to spend it, but to include that in this way in the school budget, it's kind of hard to assess. Is that the right place to spend that money? And, oh, I shouldn't have a special ed teacher so I can have this IT budget. So, it's like, how do we, how do we, I don't know, how much of that 132 is school-driven and how much of it's town-driven?
Ian or Lynn can break it down more, but mainly in that, in that 167 number, there's the procurement software, Munis, which serves both town and school. There's some cybersecurity investments which relate to both town and school. And then there's a, a work order system that would serve DPW, but obviously DPW serves town and school. So, it's, it's, it's hard to tease it out, if, to break it down between those three things I mentioned. I, I would defer to Tom or Lynn or Ian, if that's possible, right now. But, so it's really, it's the procurement software, the cybersecurity, and the online system for managing work orders is the, is really the three things that's reflected in that number. Do you think I'm missing there, Tom? Is there any other pieces of that?
Those are the main drivers. We do have separate town and school software lines. They're in the detailed line item documents that are on the website, maybe in the packet. Big piece of that increase is associated to cloud hosted Munis version. We switched over, at the end of last fiscal year, to a cloud version, and the cost went up substantially. I'd say about half of that increase is associated just for that program.
Is that an ongoing cost?
Yes, it will be.
Okay. So, we moved from buy it once to pay it monthly?
Yes.
Okay.
There were, we have recurring subscription costs of Munis. It's more expensive now because of the hosted version we went to.
Okay. But that would be a way you might say, it's a select board saying, okay, we'll offset some of the increase that's due to town-based stuff. And that shouldn't hit the school committee budget. And then the second question I have is looking at some of the underlying exhibits, you have this professional set of salary and you have this other. And the professional since 2021 has gone up 12%. And the other's gone up 34%. And the other seems to kind of be a mush of a lot of different things. So, it's hard to tell. I mean, a lot of it does look like special ed, but you also have custodians going through. There's just, it's a very mushy thing. So, it's hard to understand, like, where the actual increases in some of your salary are coming from out of that.
I might defer to my friend, Mr. Mas, if that's possible, or maybe it's something we'll need to get back to you on. I'm not sure.
I would say a majority of the other costs are related to our parent educators. They make up a majority of the FTEs associated in that group. And I would say the increase that you're seeing is specifically related to the adjustment that has occurred within that contract over the last three years. There was an adjustment that was needed based on our pay scale for that particular unit for the work.
So, that 34% increase was salary-driven, not headcount-driven?
Correct. We actually are pretty consistent in terms of the number of FTEs. Our total FTEs, to Mark's question earlier, is going down 6.9 FTEs from the approved FY24 budget to the approved, school committee-approved FY25 budget.
Okay.
Yeah, more?
I just had one question. Forgive me, I don't have the, I guess this has been revised, this, the presentation. So, I don't have this, that particular slide. So, just kind of speaking off the top of my head, there was the per-student expenditure, I think it was around $16,000 or somewhere.
Yeah.
Thereabouts. And there was, there were some other municipalities, like Springfield, Holyoke, that were over 20, that you mentioned.
Yeah.
Going to, again, and mine, mine doesn't match yours, but going to the fiscal variables chart, you mentioned fee-based revenue.
Yeah.
And so, with that, so what I wanted some clarification on was, was how that relates to the expenditures per student. Are, is the fees that you collect, just say from parents for, for whatever program counted as the money that you, that the school spent on the, on the child? Are we adding that in or is that separate?
Not sure. I mean, I'll, I'll give Tom a second to think about it, but I'm not sure it would swing that per pupil number a whole lot, because the fees we're talking about are athletic fees, preschool fees, transportation fees. So, it, it wouldn't really move the needle on that number too much. But would we make?
Yeah, I believe in terms of, we do a financial report every year, which would, we would record any expenditure that the school district incurred during that fiscal year, no matter the source, which would be consistent across all districts in the state. So, that's how they kind of are able to come up with this figure. The categories within the calculation might be off based on how districts classify expenditures, but it would be reflective of all expenses.
So, so for example, the 200 and some odd dollars that you pay for the bus, that, that gets counted as the school spending the money on the child, even though it's a fee that's collected from the parent? So, the, I'm- So, and, and this is, this is an accusation. The reason I'm asking it is because I, I, when we talk about the difference between the amount of money that Long Meadow spends per student, I wanted to know, is, is that, is, is Long Meadows keeping that number down with, by supplementing the fees, or is it still being counted even with the, do you understand my question?
I do, and I'll correct it or put one little caveat. The actual fee would have to be what would be considered net school spending eligible. So if the, the fees that are collected qualify under what would be considered net school spending eligible, transportation is not one of those qualifying expenditures, those fees that are collected and then spent on transportation would not be included. But yes, I understand what you're saying, that if we are keeping the fees down, but supplementing it with costs for certain funds from the budget, you know, is that equally included across all districts?
Right, so we, if we're saying that, look, our, our expenditure per student is comparable or lower than, than some other similarly situated municipalities, but we're charging a bunch of fees that they're not. Um, I just, again, this is not an accusation. I just wanted, trying to understand, um, you know, what that number really means.
Again, it would have to be net school spending eligible. So athletics is not necessarily part of the foundation budget. It's a service that's provided outside, so that isn't necessarily a net school spending eligible expense. So the fees, the user fees that are collected and then used to offset or pay some of the costs wouldn't necessarily be factored into the per-student expenditure. It's related to the instructional efforts or costs associated into each district.
The, the total amount that we collect in fees, Tom, just, I mean, we're, we're talking tens of thousands here, or on a?
Yeah, hundreds of thousands, if you include athletics, transportation, you know, building use, preschool fees, yes.
On that same, and again, if you don't have the number, I can get it at some other time, but what percentage of our high school sports is offset by fees?
I don't know that I'd want to give you a percentage.
Okay.
Um, I would say that since the pandemic, the percentage is probably, is going down. We are seeing a higher reliance on the school budget to provide the athletic program. We bring in somewhere between two fifty and three hundred thousand in user fees. There's some miscellaneous revenue, which would be like gate receipts or fees that are paid into the district for, um, other athletic-related activities, but not necessarily user fees. So in total, we probably collect somewhere around three hundred to three hundred and twenty-five thousand in non-budget revenue. And our total cost is probably somewhere up around seven hundred thousand or so, take or take. And we just presented the FY twenty-three report to Finance Subcommittee, we go on a school committee soon, and then we'll post it on the athletic website. Kinda breaks down revenue and then expenditures.
Are you including concessions in there?
I'm not including concessions in terms of either the concession stand that is sold and/or whatever boosters do in terms of fundraising.
Another thing would be, has anyone raised their hand, Mike, and, uh, to see if they wanna make comments? The Finance Committee especially, I guess. No?
None as of right now.
No. Anyone from the Finance Committee who's watching care to ask any questions? This is a good opportunity. Okay, then we'll let you.
If I could just grandstand for a moment, I think this is a great example of why, not next year, maybe not the year after, but long-term, we have to explore lifting the prop two and a half cap. This is, this is not the school department going crazy and doing all sorts of fun stuff. This is the school department struggling to keep level services. And inflation raises, there's contractual obligations, it's gonna go up no matter what we do. And if our taxes can't keep up, then we're going to start, we're gonna have to cut. You're gonna hear from our town budget in the next few weeks, uh, that there's, it's level services too. There's so many things that we hear about on the Select Board, of things we should do, and we just can't. We need to do more trees, we need to pave more, we need to do sewers, we need to do water. Our, our whole town's got a hundred-year-old water lines, and we can't do any of them. And if we don't eventually take hold of our own destiny and raise that cap so we can spend the money that we think we need to do, uh, we're gonna let a forty-five-year-old law that was put into place for suburban Bostonians dictate what we do. And I, I'll tell you, the town has to do certain things or else it literally falls apart. If we don't, and to do those things, which is kinda what we're doing now, and we don't have enough money, it's gonna come from the schools. If we come from the schools, our town is doomed. So, um, I know, I'm preaching to the choir to a, a big extent here, but this is just, when I'm watching this, and I, the school department's working so hard to keep absolutely level, it really, it makes me nervous for what's gonna happen, because we're, we're seeing the capital plan. If you look at the capital requests, it's the next thing on our agenda, and capital requests are in here, we're coming in here. Uh, there's no, we, we're gonna have to do something. Um, so I, I know people want to see certain things happen in this budget, and I know you did your best, and I applaud you for it, um, but it just makes me think of the long term, what we're gonna have to do.
Maury?
Just quickly, I, I just wanted to extend my thanks to you, Dr. O'Shea, for, for putting this together. I didn't say that before, I want to thank you again. And thank you to the Select Board for, um, inviting us and having these, um, these joint meetings. They're, they're critical. Thank you. So thank you, um, and to the School Committee as well, thank you for that.
All right. So, uh, any other questions or any comments from you, Lynn?
No, stay tuned.
So then, I guess we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, but thank you for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I guess the Finance Committee needs to adjourn. Okay, all in favor? Uh, John, can you vote?
Aye.
We got four out of seven, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? So our next thing is the Capital Planning Committee's recommendation on the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five capital plan. It will implement into the town meeting warrant, and so we should have all gotten a hold of that. And then, or do we have some from the capital planning?
I don't believe we do.
Okay, and I, I think you, when we were talking about this, agenda item, you said, um, you may be able to just go over this.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to it. Um, the Capital Planning Committee met twice in the last couple of weeks, uh, had good discussion both meetings, and ultimately adopted my revised FY twenty-five capital plan recommendations. Uh, I think, I believe that was attached to your agenda. It represents a two-point-one-eight million capital plan funded via general fund. And there were some other items in there funded in other man, other manners outside the general fund. And one of the things to note here is the townwide computer replacement is partially funded through the capital plan. The remaining allocation of a hundred and ten thousand, I'm proposing to be funded through a warrant article using free cash. The townwide computers are, most of the town computers are between five and seven years old. They need to be rotated out. We did not have a replacement schedule set up. Uh, with the new IT team that we have in place, they will be putting these computers on a rotation so that we do not have to replace all of them at once. That's not our goal, but we're unfortunately in that position this year.
Oh, I just wanna, in, in the past, have we had that kind of a plan that we replace so many computers every year, or?
I don't believe we do. Um, I think the last time they were replaced was right before I started here, which will be almost five years, so.
Okay, yeah, all right. Well, Mark?
Yeah, I, and I appreciate this. I, I just wanted to point out to, not only the members of the Select Board who've seen it, but other people at home, that I got in a letter from the Permanent Building Committee, and, and the, the letter we have speaks to one of the items on the capital plan, which is specifically the replacement of the Wolf Swamp Road School chiller, which is part of the HVAC system. And, you know, the, the, the current capital request is that we fund seven hundred thousand dollars for that replacement out of this capital plan. And, and I think that this, and I was at, I was actually at the Permanent Building Committee meeting, and the DPW's there as well, and so was, uh, Nick Giordano, who's the, uh, you know, facilities manager. And, and one of the things he indicated is that, you know, the Wolf Swamp School chiller needs to be replaced soon. It's leaking, and, but the, a couple of other chillers and a couple of the other elementary schools are right behind it. And so that was the basis behind the, the letter that we got from the Permanent Building Committee that said, bond it and do all three. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, personally, I'm at the school of squeeze every last hour if you can out of these things until they fail, and not, you know, but most people would say, let's replace them while they're still working, cause they're at the end of their useful life. I say all this because the question is, if we did that, or if we recommended that, you know, is there, are there other capital funding needs that could utilize this seven hundred thousand dollars? Or do we take this seven hundred thousand dollars, for example, and say, okay, we'll put part of it into roads, part of it into sidewalks, but part of it used to pay the bond on a major, uh, you know, capital project, or at least the first year? Maybe we even request that we do it for a couple of years, pay the bond on bonding these projects. Anyway, I, I, I'm not coming here saying what we need to do, uh, but seven hundred thousand dollars is a whole big chunk from our capital plan, and if there's a bunch of other things we can do and then bond that, I think we might consider it.
Yes, Josh?
On that point, uh, um, the letter's a little confusing because it talks about our three middle schools, I think, which, uh...
Yeah, I think it was elementary schools.
Well, Glenbrook's a middle school, and Glenbrook may be gone in four years. What, can we, if we buy a chiller for Glenbrook now, is that going to be, can it be used at the new school?
No, no, it's a waste.
And then that's?
But the question is, do we bond seven hundred thousand?
Well, what about here? Like this, we had the air chillers here from the old school, or the?
And now they're new.
Well, they, but they, we reused them, and we got another fifteen years out of them. Can we reuse it? I guess that would be my question there.
You know, I don't have the answer. I think you have to talk to them.
And, and this is, uh, we had a meeting last week, the Middle School Building Committee. I don't know where this, where it's gonna be. I mean, not that they can't move a chiller, but, um, is that something? I, I don't wanna spend seven hundred grand at Glenbrook because it's at the end of its life cycle if it can't be reused. If it, but also if it breaks, does it cost us more? So there's a lot of factors there, I guess. But I, I can't make a decision on this until we know that we could reuse the chiller.
Well, my, my comment wasn't necessarily that we bond two-point-one million dollars. We could bond seven hundred thousand or one point four million. You know, the, the question is, when you have a, a significant capital amount, you know, do you, do you take that money out of capital? And I guess you'd do if you got it, but if, if you could instead fund seven or eight projects of a hundred thousand dollars or less, you know, recognizing that, and, and, and part of it is, you know, my sense that a, a chiller's hopefully a long-term item. It's, it ought to be, you know, the roof of the building. It ought to be fifteen years, it ought to last, or something like that. So to me, it makes more sense to bond something like that, or, or it can be justified, I don't know if "make sense" is the right word, but it can be justified to bond something like that, because we're looking at a, at a long life, you know, like, like a roof, or it's, it's part of the HVAC system. My, my only point of bringing it up was, we got the letter, and I think we ought to consider it. And it starts for me with, if we don't, if, if we were to bond it, what other things, benefits could we get to the town by, with that seven hundred thousand dollars? And the answer is, there's nothing really better than, that's, that's a good answer.
And I, I hate seeing a zero next to sidewalk replacement. I don't know how you guys feel about that. That's a very slice of life, I bet.
Yeah, I was gonna say Lynn might be.
Yeah, so what you maybe didn't get, cause this is a little odd this year, that I'm presenting this capital plan. Um, it would have been the cap, it's normally the Capital Planning Committee. So what you don't have, because it goes to capital planning, is the memo that accompanies it. Um, and the reason that there are no, uh, funds allocated for sidewalks in the plan that I presented is that, um, uh, DPW is two construction seasons behind on sidewalk projects. And that, um, if the money were approved in FY twenty-five, they will not be able to spend it into twenty-six. So they need some time to catch up, and they felt that they had enough funding sitting there and projects that they need to get in the queue, um, that this was not going to have a detrimental impact on our sidewalk program.
Okay. Now, the first item on here is the, you know, engineering for project development. And, um, it, you know, is there, can you give us a clue, what, is it a specific project that we, like with roads, or?
Um, it's not, nothing specific I could speak about right now. Uh, this has been a pretty standing-line item here. The amount has grown though, as we've seen engineering costs grow, because project costs have grown. So this allows the DPW to spend some money developing those projects so that we have much, uh, better estimates on what the actual project's gonna cost, so that they can get these projects lined up for potentially community preservation funding, grant funding, capital funding, that they're essentially shelf, um, what is it, shovel-ready projects.
Is this, so last year, we gave a bunch of money to, they'd be ready to build projects, is that, so that's what, is it? Was that money spent last year?
Yes, they've been using that.
And was that useful?
Yes, it's very useful to them.
Okay.
Good. Yeah, uh, any questions for you guys?
Oh, uh, just a quick one. Um, I, for some reason, I can't pull up the five-year capital plan, but in that, do we have a replacement chiller for Blueberry as part of the five-year capital plan?
Yep, they're in the out-years, yes. So you don't have to vote on this tonight. You can wait until the next meeting. I will find out about the chillers. I think I know what the answer is. It's possible that we could use them in, um, another school with like technology, but my understanding with the middle school projects is, we're, we're talking about much more advanced HVAC systems.
We might even have chillers because it's three of splits.
We might have biothermal or splits, yeah. So the technology has changed so much that what's at Glenbrook right now is
That's, yeah.
decades-old HVAC systems.
The wall's probably used to be done anyway, right?
The roof's leaking, it's a, it's a problem.
So I, I'm sure we all probably saw what Mary Beth, towards the end here, the seven hundred K, potentially putting those funds towards our roads. I don't know about you guys, but it's like, it's like Frogger pretty much driving around town. So, I mean, I don't know the extent of how much it, it costs. I'm not saying a, a full pavement, like full paving job, but just fixing some of these, these like troubled areas. Um, I, I mean, I would support, um, if possible, if we could shift some of the funds to these roads in troubled areas, because it's, it's pretty bad out there.
I think you have your finger on the pulse of the community. I, you know, when we had Eversource in here and they talked about, oh, oh, yeah, we worked on Route Five, and then we, some of those side streets, we went down them, and, yeah, you drive down those streets. It's, it's, it's a battle zone. It's, it's unbelievable, and, and they're not gonna fix those streets. We, we have to pave those, right? Because they're, you know, they just patched it up and say, it's your, your town, and so you're right. I mean, there are a lot of streets that are hurting. Yeah.
I, I guess, my, my question, Lynn, for Lynn, for the DPW is, you know, it, it seems a shame that the sidewalks are, are, are behind when most of that's contracted work. It's not like the DP, and I assume we have to do some kind of work. I mean, we don't just do, you know, just say, go, go fix these sidewalks. But, but, you know, I, I'd really like to take a look at funding. I mean, like I said, we, we kept the project, trees and water and streets and sidewalks and guardrails and all this kinda stuff, you know. I'm not, I'm not cer, I'm not suggesting seven hundred thousand dollars free. It's not. It's, it's, it's gonna... It's going to cost the town either way. But I'm just suggesting maybe if we can work that into a budget that where the interest from that would come out of the capital program, and we've done that before, I would support that. The other thing I think we might want to look at is, if you look at this capital budget, I have a personal interest in it because I started it 15, 18 years ago. Fire truck fund, right now it's $125,000. We started it with $20,000, but the cost of fire trucks have gone up a lot. But what it does is, it prevents us from bonding a new fire truck every seven years. You know, and the question is, do we look at the capital plan and say, "We ought to be doing the same thing for roofs," or HVAC systems, or heating systems, or whatever it is we do, because we know we've got all these buildings that need a new roof every 25 years. We have, you know, we need a new parking lot, or we need whatever it is, or a heating plant. And if we can do that, it may be a smart move to start doing that and then, you know, save ourselves money down the road when it comes time to bonding. It's really worked out well for the fire truck fund, and I think it's something we ought to look to extend to other potential new capital plans.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I mean, that's like a great idea, when interest rates are high, to have money saved. But when interest rates are low, then you think, well, you know, you may be better off using that money on other projects and loaning at a low rate. But who knows if we'll overdrop, or when that'll be. Any other questions or comments on this?
So just so I'm clear then, for your next meeting, are you wanting me to run a scenario for you about bonding a chiller and what the potential interest rate would be and what the capital budget would need to cover in the premium?
I would, but more importantly, what else we could do with that money? I mean, if we're going to bond it, you know, hopefully we can say, "And oh, by the way, here are the things we, you know, for example, we've got, you know, I'm just looking at this thing, election tabulators or whatever it is."
Road Prairie, they requested $4 million, right? We, it's $747, so...
But, you know, in other words, not only could we bond it, what the cost would be, but what might you recommend, recommend we do that money otherwise? That's from my perspective.
All right, so we'll bring you back a scenario on that for your next meeting.
Do we have election tabulators now?
We do. So we do have them. They're not at end of life yet. I'm grateful that the town clerk put it on my radar, that these will need to be updated at some point. I was not supportive of doing it in a presidential election year. I would prefer to wait when the stakes aren't so high. So likely, you'll see this next year.
What do you mean? We have Select Board races coming up.
Yeah, just in time for me. No. All right, well, good. So then that's a plan, Lynn. Thank you. We'll look at that on our next agenda. And we have an application for someone who wants to be on the tree committee. There's a vacancy. We had one person we interviewed, and Maureen Gorman, are you here?
That's been postponed. She was actually in attendance earlier, but there was a conflict.
Oh, she was here early? Okay, yeah, all right.
I'll get back to you on that.
It's a tough, tough meeting to do that. So, all right, so we'll do that. And then it looks like we're, after that, a Select Board comments before the town manager's report. Yes?
I mentioned it earlier, but the Middle School Building Committee had a meeting last week, and we met with Jones Woodset Architects. And they're fairly local. I think they're up in Greenfield or DFOs or something. And they were, have been selected by the Middle School Building Authority as our designer. And they gave a very, really, really early stages. They essentially gave the presentation that they gave to the Middle School Building Committee about their, kind of their philosophy on design and some preliminary ideas. And it's very interesting to look at them, just to see how they laid out the schools, the thought process going by. But it's really, really early. And I can't tell you enough that because, they said that many times. But the most important process, parts of the process for planning and designing, they're doing community hearing sessions. And there, actually, there's no school on Friday. They're meeting with the middle school teachers on that professional day. And they're meeting with students over the next month or so to get ideas from the people who are currently there, how to best serve the education process and how that can feed into design. But they're also going to be, have a chance for anyone in town to speak. I know it's going to be our money paying for the school. My kids will be a little too old to go there, but I certainly got some thoughts on it. And I bet a lot of other people do, too. And so there's going to be a lot of sessions to meet with them, give your ideas, so they can get, so they can get works into the school. So that's very important. I don't know how the word, I know Marty and Lynn were talking about how they're going to get word out, and maybe she can mention that. But keep an eye out. And I really encourage people to go because the, once there's, a design will be funneled down to one design eventually, and it's funneled down to that and voted on by the Middle School Building Committee, not everyone. And we'll go to town, town meeting will vote on one design. So if you want to get your voice in, now's the time to do it.
Josh, there's been a bunch of rumors around town that there have decisions have been made, and I won't even repeat the rumors. But can, you know, it's one versus two schools, and where and how. Can you assure us that that's not the case?
That's not the case, no. And that's part of the community sound. I think that there is a, an idea that, and the last meeting was on YouTube. People can watch, and I think that people are leaning one way. But there hasn't been a decision. We voted on very small things. All the decisions, the big decisions so far have been made by the Middle School Building Authority, the state authority. We didn't get to, we didn't get to choose the designer. We did choose the consultant firm, but they had to approve it, too. So the short answer is no. The long answer is, no, definitely not.
Okay. Any other Select Board comments?
Just a quick update. As I said, I was at the Permanent Building Committee meeting, and they had some discussions with the DPW, and there were talks about, just kind of a quick review of the building issues related to the capital plan. And they were particularly concerned about the center school roof and the SOI that was put in for the center school roof, and that was discussed. I think that, you know, I think the Select Board's probably done the right thing in the, with the school committee in pursuing the SOI for the roof. And they were just looking for other things. Also, the, another quick meeting was the, it's called the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. They are running into some extreme increases in costs of roadways. And although the Long Meadow Street, what I'll call the north end of town, is now, you know, well-established in terms of going out for bids and with the timing for going out to bids and where they are, the south end of Long Meadow Street is ever so slippery, a slope with other projects. You know, there's a big project in Holyoke that went up significantly costing, that's got to come out of the pool and a few other things. And so, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we didn't see the south end of Long Meadow Street slip even further. That's the, kind of my take from the meeting.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, so when the school committee was here earlier, I was, I had asked a couple of questions, but then it went to the other side of the table. So I just, I did want to just mention a couple of points. And, you know, thank you, Josh, for bringing up the Prop 2 and 1/2. Certainly, I think that's a valid point. Certainly agree. The other point I wanted to make, so around the special education piece as well. So personally, I was a, I was a par educator right after college, and I know what they go through on a regular basis. And I just think that when I ask the school committee to prioritize things, should we get additional funds, I think that's an area that we really need to focus on. And, I mean, Josh said it very eloquently. I certainly agree with everything he said. And as a student at Center School myself, I benefit from those services. And I think we certainly can do more, and it's a very tough budget season. The other piece is on the music program as well. So I look a lot of times at, you know, just the opportunities that kids have in Long Meadow. And some kids, they might be doing better in school. Some kids might be doing better in sports, or in music, for example. And those are the kids that have other opportunities because the town of Long Meadow provides those types of opportunities, whether it's music or whether it's athletics. And I just think that, and special education as well. These are the types of kids, in many cases, that maybe aren't doing as well with their schooling. I think this is an opportunity, should we get additional funds, to really look at these areas. Because I think, you know, as the, as kids graduate from Long Meadow, these, like athletics and music, those are two areas that Long Meadow's really known for. And I think we need to continue to make those investments so we have those opportunities. So I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out.
All right, thank you. Okay, so if that's it, we'll move on to the town manager's report for March 4th.
Thank you. So several meetings ago, I was here talking to you about the complete streets policy and needing to update it. I put out a call for residents to apply to join a review group. We had 11 people apply. I was originally going to only have two citizen members, but with the massive number of people that applied, I increased that to five. And so I'm happy to say that after doing interviews with the ones that actually confirmed interviews, I have five people joining the group. It's Clayton Shetler, Matt Cassell, Lindsay Ochs, J.J. Rodriguez, and Ezra Keim. And we're going to be meeting with town staff and beta group. And the first meeting is scheduled for March 25th. So that will move along pretty quickly once that gets going. Last weekend, we received a call to the Long Meadow Police Department that a dugout at Wolf Swamp Fields was laying on the ground. LPD investigated, along with the DPW. After reviewing the area and the collapsed dugout, we were all speculating as to what could have caused the collapse. We did quite a bit of research on this and were between vandalism, weather, or poor construction. And then ultimately, after having the building inspector look at it and really looking at all the factors, the opinion has come down to be caused by wind damage. The footings failed, and a claim's been made with Maya. An adjuster was on site last week taking photos. The dugout's estimated to cost $21,000. So we're hoping to get that repaired before the baseball season starts. The Emerson and Cooley Water Main replacement project, it had started late in the fall, in November roughly. And they did get a little bit of work done, but mostly it was just laying out the construction areas. But I'm happy to say that with the nicer weather that we've been experiencing, they are planning to remobilize on the site very soon. So we should see some activity there. And the same goes with the Eversource Long Meadow Street work. Eversource has alerted the town that they plan to be on Long Meadow Street next week. They have been working very closely with the DPW director on that schedule. And Laserfish and archiving documents update, this is somewhat of a potentially boring topic, but it has a really interesting outcome, I think. My office, mainly spearheaded by Mike, has been working really hard to digitally archive documents and records through our Laserfish platform. This is a software we received through a state grant. And we've been extremely fortunate to have a senior and veteran tax abatement volunteer working with Mike on this. The volunteer began the project beginning of February and has successfully archived over 50 years of Select Board meeting minutes, liquor license information, utility permits, and more. The volunteer has also uploaded all annual reports of the town dating back to 1855. And they're available on the Select Board page of the town website. The scanning and archiving projects are also underway in all the departments. And most of this work is being done by these abatement, tax abatement volunteers. So a huge thank you to them for moving forward on this work because eventually, it will all be linked on the town website, so making hundreds of years of documents available. And also, departments have been given strict orders to have all of this stuff scanned and digitized because when we move to Greenwood, there's a lot less space for paper. And it also, it just helps with our continuity of operations. If these documents were to be lost in some sort of natural disaster, we do still have them available on the cloud. And then lastly, just to add more to what Josh was saying about the middle school building project, tomorrow, for those of you that come to the community house and vote, there is a poster. As you exit the voting location, you can scan a QR code and sign up to receive the middle school building newsletter, where we'll be putting out all information related to the project, especially the public forums and listening sessions that are going to be vitally important so that people can weigh in on the type of middle school that they want to see and where they want to see it.
Well, I just, what's Laserfish?
Laserfish.
And what is, so is it a hard, or is it just electronic?
It's like microfilm, but it's a little thing instead of a real...
So it's like MicroFish, except it's just updated.
It's essentially a document management system. So it'll scan, right now, we're using it to scan records and store them digitally. But it also has the capability to capture the metadata from your document and make all these documents searchable. So if you are looking for, you know, a Select Board meeting that had to do with chickens, you can just type in chickens, and it will pull up all the minutes that relate to that 50 years back.
So it's much more resilient than any kind of, just purely electronic record?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, great.
I think dogs might be more relatable.
Dog, sure, yeah.
Yeah, dogs is just, let's pass here.
And we also have the capabilities of doing workflows and online business forums for town departments, like budget transfer requests, things like that. So it's got a lot of capabilities.
Okay, good.
Real quick, Lynn, on the dugout, common sense would say, we're looking at the other dugouts as well to make sure that we're going to make sure they're secure as well.
Yep, absolutely. They've all been inspected.
Any other comments or questions about the manager's report? Okay, so then we move to all minutes. We need to approve the minutes of our February 5th meeting?
Tom, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes of the February 5th meeting, subject to several corrections that I sent Mike. And I just want to make, comment on one because it was clearly a typo. And people need to know that this is being adjusted somewhere in there. We're talking about Eversource. It said, "Eversource has not been able to complete the work at the end of the day in a manner that has not been safe for vehicle traffic." And I think it should be changed to, and what Sean said is, "has not been able to complete the work at the end in a manner that has been safe for vehicle traffic." So that is one of the, I guess that's more substantial than the others. So mostly typos and other things that I sent Mike.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Okay. So we move on to Dogs and Nuisance Hearing that we had a few weeks back now. And so we received a letter for asking for waiver. If you folks all had a chance to look at this, from Mr. Goldberg. It is signed by his mother, Paula Goldberg. And he's saying that our recommendations to have phone calls from the neighbors are not really acceptable to Mrs. Goldberg. She signed this. And so, you know, we also, so I don't know if anybody comments on his request for the waiver. But then we also did get a message from our legal counsel, who was here at the meeting, who clearly would have advised us at the time if we were doing anything that was inappropriate. And so he, you know, so he has his comments there. I don't know if, yes, Josh?
So I think my, my reading of this is, and from reading between the lines a bit, we can't compel speech, and we can't tell who to talk to who. So we gave an advisory opinion. We recommended how this should all go. I, to me, I think, I will, I'll reach out to Larry tomorrow. But I, I think that we can let this lie now. And it's all become, and based on his email, it's going to become moot at the end of this month, anyway. So hopefully, everyone can work it out. He can help his mother out for a month. But I don't know how, how much farther we can go. Since we can't compel anyone to talk to anybody, we can't change, our order is advisory. So the only thing we could do is advise Larry's... So the only thing we could do is advise Larry's mom to, or Larry to talk to neighbors or work it out some other way. But there's nothing else we can really do. I know we'd rather spend another hour on a dog hearing, but I think, to me, that we're kind of, we're kind of done here. And it's going to be moot in a month, anyway.
So the hearing's closed, and you don't see any movement. And yeah, the idea of having other neighbors call Mrs. Goldberg's son, I, you know, I just don't feel comfortable with that at all, based on some of the things we've said here and we've read, that I think that could cause more harm than good. So, yeah.
So Josh, what you're basically saying is, there's no need to have attorney chaplain draft a response, that we just kind of wait this out until this month?
No, no, he is, I think what Mike's memo said is, if we agree with what he said, then attorney chaplain will write a response, which I think is the right thing to do. Which, and I think that response will say, "It is advised that you work it out neighborly and talk." And I think that however they accomplish that, that's what's going to happen, and it's going to become moot. That doesn't have to be in the letter, but I think attorney chaplain can just say, "Hey, figure it out, because if they come back, then something's going to happen."
Okay.
No, I agree. The question is, do, I mean, this is an agenda item, do we have to take action to take no action, or do we just say we're moving on?
Well, you know, our town council is, you know, they do things like this for us all the time, so.
My only question is, what happens when now the dog is over at Mr. Goldberg's house? Who are they gonna, are they gonna, are they gonna call him Mr. Goldberg, or, I mean?
It's a whole new set of neighbors.
Again, it's the same dog.
He's been found a nuisance once, so that is, I guess we'll tackle that one.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, in theory, Larry's home to help bring Coda in. So that was, I talked to Larry about this outside. He will be home more to help his mom, so if, he could even talk to her and say, "Well, only let out Coda when I'm home," or something. So hopefully this can get taken care of.
One other thing is that people get those ring doorbells, and you could hear what's going on from, you know, the sound, or even a baby monitor set up, you know? So you could hear if the dog's barking. I mean, the person who is supposed to be taking care of the dog should be able to hear if the dog is barking outside. I don't, I think we have enough technology to figure that out, which shouldn't inconvenience any neighbors, so.
So do we need to vote to have attorney chaplain write the response?
Might as well.
Yeah. So I moved to have attorney chaplain draft a response to the dog nuisance waiver request submitted by Ms. Goldberg.
Second.
Okay, great. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And next, we look at Poor Things Coffee Food Beverage Cart Renewal Request. And we've gotten a chart that, you know, reviewed what they did last year, and we need to approve this request. Anyone have any comments?
Yeah. I was actually going through the meeting minutes on this issue last time. I know, Mark, you had concerns around Starbucks, right, possibly getting upset of the coffee? And I think, Tom, you had some issues around maybe the trucks lining up, you know, by the community house. So I haven't seen or heard of any issues. I think they've done a good job, they've been a good business, good, I just hear a lot of compliments from this business, and it's kind of what I expected, and I think a couple of, I know Josh supported them as well, and beneath last time around. So I would personally like to extend this to make it a year, rather than, they've already gone through the first six months, and I'd like to make this like an annual renewal, rather than every six months. And then if there are issues, then they will hear about it, or they can contact the town. But Lynn or Mike, you might know, has there been any complaints or issues since six months?
Not that I've received, at all.
Yeah, and I think, oh, I was gonna say, I think, I think last time, we did not do a year, because we just wanted to mash it up with the calendar years. But, yeah, no, but I second everything Dan said. I think they've done a great job, there have been no complaints. So if y'all want, I can make a motion to, I moved to renew Poor Things Coffee's permit for 2024.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, I think we renewed, they were only out for about a month, there wasn't much time. I know I saw them at Community House a few times, I don't know if they went anywhere else. Actually, they were at Bliss Park at least, once or twice. So I think that it was an annual permit, it just ran out in a couple of months. So yeah, I think this is all 2024, but it worked very well at Community House, which was the only place I was really concerned with parking lining up. And I think they did a good job managing it, parking at the end worked out well. So I wish them the best of luck, and I'm glad it worked out.
Okay, any further discussion? Here or none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right, that's great. And then we have a new business, and we already covered this, the objects on the tree belt request. We have a street closure application, and this is something we've dealt with the last couple of years. The Long Meadow Girls Lacrosse Association applied for a street closure application to close Bliss Road and Blueberry Hill Road on Saturday, May 4th, from 7:00 to 5:00 for lacrosse jamboree. The application with comments from the police department was attached to the agenda, and, you know, we've done this a few years and uneventful. Anyone have any questions on the application?
I just want to clarify, when you said Bliss Road and Blueberry, it's Bliss Road, and it's Bliss Road from Blueberry to Bliss Court. It's not closing Blueberry.
Okay, so it closed Bliss Road from Blueberry Hill. So yeah, what's written here is different, so. But thank you for the clarification. And so do we have a motion to?
Tom, I just have, I just have a question. I'm just concerned, one, I'm not concerned, but I was wondering if we'd gotten any feedback from the police about the traffic or the parking situation? And I haven't been in town the last couple of years to see what was going on, so I'm not really sure what it was. But I guess the only question is, you know, was there, were there any recommendations or suggestions that came out of it? I know that even after last year, some, we're talking about different signage, or better signage, or whatever it was, or parking, I thought some things came out of it.
Melissa's here. All right, Melissa, why don't you step up? Thanks for being here.
We also, we had a detailed meeting with emergency management team, so it was police, fire, DPW, Parks and Rec. They went over the traffic plan, pretty much presented the traffic plan that was utilized last year as well for this event, and pretty much just recreated that based on the request for this year's request. I don't know if you want to just touch on anything else?
Yep, no, there was no additional recommendations. We're planning on the same number of police officers. We're actually in a better spot this year, there's no competing sports events happening in town on that day. Last year, I believe there was a tennis event happening at the same time, so we're already relieved of parking for that instance. And the police department didn't have any comments, they didn't have any incidents to report, so we didn't make any changes to anything.
Okay, and one of the things that I thought was great about this activity is that, you know, it's in the center of town, and people could access businesses and shop and so forth. Did you have any indication, did people eat in the shops, or, you know?
No, there hasn't been any kind of post-jamboree surveys from that. I mean, we kind of see people coming back with the Starbucks and, you know, stuff from Big Y to Big Y bags. There are food vendors there for the players and parents to utilize, so they might venture out, but I know we see definitely parents with the Starbucks and visiting the shops.
Okay, no, but it's good, because it brings some business to some of the shops.
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Yes, to me.
Yeah, no, I attended this event with my family the last couple of years, it was a great event, and exactly, I think, the kind of like community event that people in town are looking for. And, you know, it was a great time, and I hope that this year, the weather was as good as was last year, because it was great weather, and, you know, we got to walk, and everyone had a great time, so, fully supportive of this event, yeah.
Great, great. Mark?
I don't know whether to point this to Melissa or somebody else, but originally, historically, I guess, this jamboree had been held at the Wolf Swamp Fields, and, or maybe not this one, but certainly some of the ones. And we didn't do it, because the Wolf Swamp Fields had been closed during a couple of years. And originally, there was a discussion that, well, when Wolf Swamp Fields opened up, we may move back there. Is there any thought at all of ever moving back there?
No, because of the central location of the high school fields, with the proximity to the shops and the convenience of that, and since we haven't had any issues with parking, we don't see a need to move out to the Wolf Swamps for this particular, if the jamboree expands to the number of teams, we may need additional space at Wolf Swamp to utilize that, hopes and dreams. But for now, the Russell Fields are the better location for the jamboree.
And is there, is the Lacrosse Association paying any kind of fee to the, or the school department, or the Parks and Rec department for the use of those fields?
Yes, for the use of the fields, will we pay for all the EMS, police services, any permit fees for that? But if there is a fee related to the use of the fields, then I am sure that we pay that, and I'm working through that, as we work through the permit process.
Thank you.
Okay, well, great. You know, I'm glad you're actually going to keep it there, I think it's a good idea. Yes?
Yeah, I just wanted, I agree with everyone, I think it's an awesome event. Mark, you probably remember way back in the day, playing, when I played with your son, we used to play right at the center of town as well. And I think it's important that we have these events at the center of town, because of, you know, the little bit of extra economic activity that we can get, it's central location, there's a lot of parking as well. And I think that we should be doing more of these, personally, whether it's the girls' events, or potentially boys' events as well. I also sit on the long-range planning committee, and one of the items that comes up all the time is community events and trying to do more in town. It's an exciting, you know, thing to do. And lacrosse has a huge history in Long Meadow. And I think it's good to celebrate that history, and a lot of people get involved and excited for this. So I'm glad to see that you're doing it at the center of the town, especially when the Wolf Swamp Fields was, just had, you know, a huge investment just a couple of years ago. So fully support this, glad you're doing it again, and, you know, wish you the best of luck.
Another reason to keep it here is, we actually, two years ago, had to use the high school as a cooling facility because of the temperature, so having the attachment of the facility became a very big benefit to have that. So we wouldn't necessarily get that at Wolf Swamp, but hopefully someday, again, we'll be so popular, there will be overflow fields for the tournament.
And this is just on the Russell Fields, it's not on the stadium, or any of the?
No, it'll be all of them, there'll be both sides of the street, which is why we're closing it. And then the stadium's used for like the senior, the senior team, so it'll be utilized, everything, throughout the day.
Gotcha.
All right, so we need to get a motion for the approval?
Yeah, so I moved to approve the street closure application submitted by the Long Meadow Girls Lacrosse Association for the jamboree on September, or, sorry, on Saturday, May 4th, 2024.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Wonderful, thank you.
Oh, thanks for being here.
Yeah, come on down.
All right. We also need to, there's a, get a look for a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Glen Meadow, for an event to be held March 8th, from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. for the retirement community.
I'll approve the one-day liquor license application as stated.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, so we come to correspondence. You know, we have, one of the things on here that came across was the excessive dog barking complaint that we received. And so the first response will be to have our dog officer, control, animal control officer, to talk to the person and find out what's going on, and see if that can be resolved. Because, you know, otherwise we may have, just week after week, or every two weeks we'll have a dog hearing. So unless anyone else has an alternative idea, we'll do that.
The dog hearing, us hearing that, that's statute, right? There's nothing we can do about that? Were there arbitrary dog complaints?
If you mean if we get a request submitted, yes, yeah. So the reason why I didn't put this one forward as an agenda topic right away, was because I think I mentioned that there was no direct address associated with it. They have to provide direct address. So we need to know who to contact for future hearings and things like that. So I had reached out to Marty Lee to reach out to the resident to see if they could investigate and figure things out before it got to that point. So they're in the process of doing that right now, and then I guess by the next meeting, we'll know more information.
Yeah.
Just an interesting twist on our.
No, I know, well, hopefully we can, this get resolved before it comes to us.
Are we always going to have council present for dog hearings, or is it, like, after we do a few?
It's up to you. There's no extra charge for them to be here for this, it's included in their monthly cost.
It is very helpful to have. I'm sure he loves it.
He's gonna be like the expert throughout Commonwealth.
I think we can, we'll get a better handle on, if we keep getting them, we know, Mike and I generally know, and you guys will know, if they're going to be really contentious or not. And I think then, there's a lot of value to have town council here, if we do think it's going to be something that we would need their guidance on.
Okay, and then, you know, we had another thing.
Marquette's.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna comment about a letter that we got, because it's, and not this particular letter, but in general, I got a lot of people contacting me about, "Do something about what's going on in East Long Meadow." And, you know, my answer to everybody has been, and continues to be, you know, East Long Meadow is a, a dooley's, you know, it's their own, their own community. They get to do what they want, and frankly, if somebody came in from East Long Meadow to tell us what to do, we'd probably tell them to stay in East Long Meadow, and I suspect they were gonna, would have told us the same things. I think that people have independent ability to make comments and do what they want to, but it gets very difficult for the select board to intercede. And, you know, we had this with the Mayfair Apartments in Enfield, that some of us remember trying to do, that we had no jurisdiction at all, and we certainly had no jurisdiction in East Long Meadow. I think the one thing that we were able to do, and it was mostly for our public safety department, was the time that there was a proposal to run a convoy of trucks of natural gas through the town of Long Meadow. But that was, to some degree, a different story. But, you know, I appreciate people coming to us and commenting to us, but the fact is that we got our own level of problems and are unable to really address East Long Meadows.
Tom, I, very brief, my office, I mean, I grew up there, so I hear a lot of things. This, the warehouse, I know the planning board sent a letter, when this first came up, our planning board sent a letter, saying just to consider our traffic concerns, which I think is about what you can do. If the planning board in East Long Meadow wants to hear from Long Meadow residents, they can. They, this, the warehouse permit got denied, incidentally, and they're going to get sued. East Long Meadow is going to get sued, would be my guess. And one of our concerns from Long Meadow is, we can't, we don't want to step in that. So if East Long Meadow made a decision, said, "And we did this because the Long Meadow Select Board came up," you know, that, that could be problems for us. So, you know, I'm happy to hear from people, I did hear from people on this, but it's really, it's up to, the town can't do much, I think, is what it comes down to.
Right, yeah. And it was nice to see that, at least they've ordered down. But, yeah, you know, it's just, I drove today, I went by an Amazon distribution center in Bloomfield. My God, that thing is huge. And it's probably full of computers, carrying boxes all around and putting trucks, it's like, hopefully we won't have to deal with that.
I'm over your judge.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, good evening, and good night.